Okay, so thanks for coming, everybody. We are just coming from our executive session where we were kind of doing a part two to our retreat that we held a few weeks ago. And in our retreat, we were, or our part two of our retreat, we were doing the MBTI assessment test, which is the Myers-Briggs Personality Test, basically. So I thought it was really interesting. We basically all took these assessments prior to the meeting tonight. And there was a facilitator there who kind of walked us through what the findings were. And it was interesting to think about what, where we were similar as a group, you know, in terms of thinking or processing material, and where we were different. And I know the administrators did the similar experience earlier today. And so it really kind of helped, I think, all of us to see the big picture in terms of working together as a group, and things that we need to watch and look out for, and try to do better at in terms of how we communicate with each other, and also things that we probably do pretty well as well. So I thought it was a valuable experience. I don't know if you guys have anything additionally to share about that, but that's what we were doing with our afternoon evening. Okay, so we are gonna, I think, pause for a minute on the student volunteers from the Haldane varsity football team because they're not here yet. They're coming later, right?
Actually, because they had to change the time for practice, I think we're just gonna have one person that's coming in to represent the team.
We will await them running in, in their practice gear. Okay, so let's move into the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we have a number of different things to talk about. The first is, and I'm gonna kind of add a couple of things into this. I'm gonna actually do the first and the fourth. We had an interview yesterday with the recommended student resource officer that has been recommended for Haldane. We had a committee that came together and met with the officer probably for about an hour, asked many questions. We had parents, we had community members, we had board members, we had administrators. And this gentleman, Paul Piazza, is coming to us. He has been a resource officer in the Brewster School District for many years, and he was kind of handpicked as the person that they thought would work best with our community. We had many different questions, bless you, asked about many things that were concerned based on who the constituent group was. And he was able to answer the questions in such a way that you just knew that he had loads of experience. And he understood what it was to be a resource officer. He understood what it is to be a resource officer in a school, how parents would potentially find like the characteristics for that resource officer, what they would be looking for, what students would be looking for, what faculty would be looking for, what administrators would be looking for. So it was, I think that everybody left feeling like he was our perfect match. So that's part of it. The first part of my report also says that we received a $7,000 grant from Sue Serino. And we are in the process of kind of managing the cost to the district between an SRO and an SPO. And we have about a 20, originally had about a $20,000 deficit, which I have sought out a number of people to see if we can close that gap. So Sue Serino was the first to step up, and she has some funding that she, $7,000, she is dedicating to the district for that. I've also been in contact with our congressman and his office, and there are different things that they are looking for. And hopefully by, I would say, early fall, we will have the $20,000 and the differential. So it will be coming from outside sources. So I think there may be some questions that people have had. I know that we started talking about the student resource officer and bringing a resource officer into the district probably in the fall. We continued on in the conversation through the budget season because we were talking about, do we want to dedicate ourselves to an SPO? Do we want to dedicate ourselves to an SRO? And through the conversations, we found that we were the only school district that did not have an SRO in their high school. And there are districts that have SROs in their high school, and they may have SPOs in the middle and the elementary school. But the districts that have representation at the high school level, they were all SROs. The Putnam County Legislature had to really kind of focus on that area because originally they only wanted to provide an SPO for the district, and we did put that in the budget. But as far as equity goes, and parity, and all the things that we want to make sure that we include to make sure our students are given the same supports as students in any other place in Putnam County, we had that conversation. Letters were written, conversations were had with both the sheriff and Sue Serino and our local legislature, and they did find the funding to, in order to provide an SRO instead of an SPO. So there have been some questions about why an SRO. Why is it something that we should be having in our district? And I can tell you, from my own personal experience, I first started working with an SRO in the Carmel High School in 1996. And this is the first experience since then where there was not an SRO. And I can tell you that the SRO becomes a very trusted adult. It's somebody that the kids get used to very quickly. They're seen as a support. They're seen as a confidant. They are seen as somebody that the students can go to for information. The SROs go into classes. They can teach. They can go in. And if there is anybody who has an interest, if they go into a health class, if they go into a psychology class, any of, any classes that would lend themselves well to having an SRO as part of the conversation, they go in and they take part in that. Additionally, I can tell you that it's something for health and safety, obviously, health and safety reasons is the primary purpose of having SROs in the district. And it is not just for the worst-case scenario. I can tell you, when I have used SROs in the past and when they have been called upon, it's for more day-to-day type of situations. There might be parental issues. There may be custody issues. There may be somebody who doesn't belong on school property. There may be concerns about the health and safety of a child, of a conflict that's potentially going to happen. And they become invaluable in those moments, too. So if you think about any potential where a police could be a support system, that's why the SROs are in the schools. They are not, I mean, hopefully, God forbid, we never have to have an SRO in an extreme situation. That's not what it's intended for, although if there ever was an extreme situation, we would thank our lucky stars if there was somebody here. So I think it's more of a holistic kind of situation. And if you can think of some of the types of situations that schools find themselves in, and it's not the Haldane district, it's all school districts. We are working with everybody in the population. There are some situations in which we need some help and some support to be able to handle well. And that's the true beauty of having an SRO in the district. So I think that that's something that we look forward to as we welcome our SRO into school in September. And they will be here for parents to meet. He will be here for students to meet. If there, he'll go to the PTA meetings. He'll go to any group that wants him there. He's more than willing to come. And I think that when you get an opportunity to meet with him and understand who he is, you'll kind of understand how he fits well here. He is a father. He has two children. They are both elementary school age. One of the questions that he was asked is, you know, does he ever feel conflicted between realizing he's a dad with two kids at home and being in a situation where he may have to put himself in harm's way? And his response is, they're all my children. It's not just my two children at home. You know, I'm here. That's why I put this uniform on every day, and I'm here to protect everybody that was within the district. So I think that yesterday was a very productive day. I think everybody felt very good leaving the meeting after meeting Officer Piazza. And I think he's going to be a great match for us.
Can I just ask you?
Sure.
Just, there's been two different areas that I've heard parents have concerns about, so that maybe you could just speak to them a little bit. And the two things are the, you know, we hear a lot about drug prevention, and we've been working a lot with the Communities That Care Coalition this past year. So could you talk a little bit about how the resource officer might play a role in that scenario? And then the other is the idea of discipline. Can you talk a little bit about how you see the resource officer's role in school discipline?
Well, I'll start with the CTC, and he should be an active member of the CTC. The Community That Care Coalition is a Phillips Town Coalition. It's not a Haldane Coalition. And he would want to be, very much want to be a part of that as well. And one of the things that we were talking about, and that was a question that was asked yesterday, is about their role, the potential role of an SRO in drug prevention. And basically, his response is, you know, what police have done in the past in an education setting is something like dare. And that's, he knew that that's not what we're looking for. But he said, basically, he will do whatever it is that works for us in that situation. And that's a good segue into the discipline piece. His role here would not be disciplinarian. His role would be if there is a concern, or if there's something that he may be aware of, then it would come to the administrators. And the administrators, as we do right now, would be the people that deal with the situation. The only time I have ever experienced an SRO dealing with something directly is if there is an illegal act that's taking place in front of them. And otherwise, they step back. They know the education law that we deal with here, first of all, supersedes, because we're in school, what happens, what the police can do. Because we have the, en locos parentis, we have the ability to act in more as in the capacity of a parent than the police. So if there was something that was going on that we wanted to deal with, the administrators are the ones that have the ability to deal with it far better than the police. The police, they're governed by penal law. The school is governed by education law. And so it's a very different scenario. I can also tell you that in my experience, I have never had a resource officer go out and do something on their own without direct understanding, conversation, planning with the administrators in the district. Because they are here as our support and our resource. They are not here to take the place of an administrator. So the administrator is the one that, as has always been the case, will make whatever we're doing, hopefully, as educationally sound as it can be, and we are the one that calls the shots here. Unless, of course, that there's a violent situation or something that's happening directly in front of the officer, he will deal with that.
And then the other thing that was brought up in one of the local papers recently was the funding for the position. Can you just talk a little bit about, I know we're thankful to Senator Serino, we're thankful to Barbara Scicchimara, you know, we're thankful to these people for pulling some money together. The article seemed to suggest that, you know, the funding was just through a certain period of time. Can you talk about a little bit, like, what we can expect? Is it ongoing funding?
When I signed the contract, which I haven't gotten yet, but when I signed it, I'm signing it for the year. So the district will contract with the sheriff's department for an SRO for the school year. What was in the newspaper was a discussion that happened at the legislature. And the legislature was initially, they only wanted to provide an SPO, which would keep their share of the funding at bay. And because the cost of the SPO is 30,000 to 35,000 the first year, that's what we budgeted. And the rest of the funding would come from the community or Putnam County. They would pay for half of the cost of the SRO during the school year, and then they pay the full cost during the summer because they become regular police. So they do whatever it is that they ask them to do through the sheriff's department. There's also different, there's insurance and other things that don't happen with an SPO that happen with an SRO. So initially, they were only planning to provide an SPO through, of course, through conversation with a number of Putnam County officials and some letters that were written from my office, they changed their mind. And so then they had to consider where their funding that they would need to add, where it would come from. They, I know that our, my colleagues in other Putnam County districts have gotten letters recently telling them that there's going to be an upgraded cost for their SRO. So I think that's where part of it is coming from. And so we're going to see an increase in the other districts that are going to be paying for the SRO. And right now, because the Putnam County fiscal year is January to January, all they could say is what they were doing as far as the fiscal year right now. So it looked as if it was going to disappear at the end of December. That's where they have determined where the funding is going to come from this year's. They have to determine where the funding is going to come for next year's. But that doesn't necessarily relate to us.
Well, it could potentially relate to us if we've signed a contract to pay the monies associated with the SRO for the entire school year, and then the funding from Putnam County gets cut off, right?
Well, they would have to cut off the funding for all SROs. And they would have, because it would be equitable. And the sheriff's department, that would be the issue between the legislature and the sheriff's department. Because it's going to say what our cost is. Our contract will give us the cost for the 15, 16 school year. And it's something that needs to be determined where they're going to get it, but it doesn't, it won't come from us.
But if the fiscal years don't match?
Right? Is that the question? If the fiscal years don't match, and our fiscal year goes July 1st to July 1st, and the county's fiscal year goes January 1st to December 31st, could we get caught in something bad?
If they were not going to keep their part of the bargain, they would have to remove it from all districts. It couldn't just be from us.
But their part of the bargain carries us through our fiscal year.
Correct. That's what the community, that's what the contract will say when it comes. It's for the full year. And I'll be happy to share it as soon as I get copies of it, so you can see what's being included in it. And we're dealing with numerous bureaucracies with this. And we're dealing with Putnam County. We're dealing with the sheriff's department, and we're dealing with our district. So there's only one part of it that we can control, and we believe that there are people that are working in our best interest to make sure that it happens well.
And I think what you're saying, Peter, is that it's, if they made this decision to cut their funding to all school districts for their SRO for next year, say that, say they made that decision, which would be a really big decision to make and would upset a lot of people, but say they did it, would Haldane have to pay their half of it? Or could we just say, okay, we can't afford you, so?
Well, they would be the one that would be voiding the contract.
So we wouldn't be on the hook? I guess that's what we're saying. We wouldn't be on the hook to come up with the extra cash for this position?
And I don't think that that, the expectation, I haven't heard from anybody, that the expectation is there's going to be a problem in January.
Right. Yeah, we're assuming that.
Yep.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure that there's a clause in the contract that doesn't hold us liable for paying the balance of the full year.
And as soon as they get, now that we know who the resource officer will be, now all the paperwork can be done and we can move forward.
What do they wear? Do they wear, what kind, a uniform, like a police uniform?
Yep.
And do they walk around with a visible weapon?
They have a weapon on their belt.
But is it visible? Yeah, it's on the belt?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you ready for questions?
Well, do you want to open it up to questions?
I'm fine with it. Yep, sure.
Yeah, why don't we open it up to questions?
It's a long question.
So Carolyn, would you mind coming over and just saying who you are?
Wrong side.
Right here.
Right to the microphone.
So we can hear you, so, and the people at home can hear you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Llewellyn. I have an incoming kindergarten and a fourth grader. I'm wondering a few things. How the particular officer was chosen as a parent? I would have liked to seen a job description and have, well, I would have liked to see it before. And I would have liked to, you know, have some input ahead of time before the interviews were done by whoever chose the individual. And I'm also wondering if this individual has child psychology or mental health training, and if not, if that's in the works for professional development for their role, or if it's not appropriate. I don't really know. But my concern is that, as you described, we have someone who becomes a real trusted individual. We've had some, you know, some issues with folks, and I just want to make sure that this is a real benefit to our students and someone who increases their safety and the amount of adult confidence they have, or whatever. So, thanks.
Thank you, Carolyn. Do you want to?
So I can respond to a couple of things that you said. And I can tell you, for this individual, he is college educated, and he has gone through multiple trainings that are related to any type of situation, an emergency-type situation. If you're asking, will he counsel students as a counselor would in the school, a social worker, a psychologist, the answer is no. Part of the counseling that they will get is to know who to take the child to if there is a situation, if somebody comes and shares a situation with them. They will make a determination with the administrator as to the course, the best recourse for the situation. But they are not going to sit down and have a counseling session with them. And I think that that's an important part. So our psychologists, our social workers will be part of that, and that's part of their training, so they don't overstep their boundaries.
And maybe, can you also just speak to the hiring committee? And I know Peggy, you were there as well, so could you speak to the process?
So there were, we had, well, first of all, the safety committee was the first group. Any parent representative on the safety committee, they were invited to be part of it. Peggy, as a board rep, was part of it. And I know Linda did put out invitations to a number of different representatives, including the PTA. And that would be where the parent groups come from.
Diana, am I remembering correctly that this, it was the, it was a recommendation from the safety committee that, which is, which is made up of parents and staff?
Correct.
It was a recommendation of the safety committee that this position be put in place?
Correct.
Right. And can I, is, it's okay for me to say who was at the meeting?
Sure.
Yeah. So I thought it was valuable to actually have at the meeting the president of the Haldane School Foundation, the president of the PTA, and then myself as both a parent and a board member, and a psychologist, I guess, ask a lot of questions. And, you know, a lot of the PTA questions, I thought, I thought the PTA president asked a lot of questions about the SRO's background, understanding the developmental differences in children. I mean, I have been, I'm on the record, right, in the PCNR, as saying that I was ambivalent about this post. And so it was important for me to go to this meeting. And one of the things that was, first of all, I liked him very much. I thought he actually had a really great, I thought he had a really good understanding of child development. I mean, and the answers he gave, I mean, when you listen, and he did a lot of the talking. There were a lot of questions, but he really talked for the bulk of this hour. And in listening to him, so I'm saying this to my board colleagues about what I heard at this meeting, is, you know, in talking that much, you hear somebody say a lot of things. And so he said things that I found actually very, that made me feel very comfortable with him and his background to serve in this role. One of them was, without being trained as a developmental psychologist, having a really good sense of how you have to interact really differently with children, and even from year to year, how there can be a really, a real important difference in how you might want to interact and what kinds of activities and what you might want to engage with children, which is, of course, what we would expect from someone in this role. And I thought he demonstrated that knowledge very well. I also was really impressed, actually, in a response to a question of mine that was maybe not phrased very articulately, him saying that rather than wanting to be interpretive as a deterrent, right? So I said something along the lines of, well, having somebody on the campus will be a deterrent. Like, if I was a parent who didn't have custody of my kid, and I wanted to come grab my kid off the campus, which is, in this world, we live in something that we have to address, and we don't want our administrators to have to be dealing with, you know, would, having somebody like that could be a deterrent. I mean, and that's just one of many, many situations that you could imagine that can happen and that we hear about happening in the news on a regular basis. And he said, well, what I'd like to do is not be thought so much as a deterrent, but as being here and helping to put in place preventative activities and really building the kinds of programs and knowledge and awareness across kids that that's going to help them be on the right track. So anyway, that was a sort of a long description of this. And, yeah, so, I mean, so it's in part in to address your concerns, but really to hear, to articulate what I heard from him. I did, Diana's right. I walked away really thinking like, oh, this is a really good, like, I don't know how they picked this guy for Haldane, but he seemed to me to be a really good fit for the community.
Thank you.
Were there, were there any teachers at the, at the meeting?
I don't know if anybody came. They were invited.
We were, because I would, I looked back, I didn't, I don't remember seeing an email.
I would have to check with Linda.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, they would have come through her.
Oh, okay.
But I'm trying to think, I don't know if there were any teachers. No, I don't believe there were.
Yeah, because I think that that would have been a really good thing for, you know, for a teacher to be there as well. And I think that's, I, I myself, I'm, you know, I'm happy that this is happening. I think that it's a good thing. I recall that, I recall that in the, when, in the budget discussions, that there was, you know, that this was a part of our original budget discussions. And so, you know, I'm happy that this is all coming to fruition. Yeah, I just, you know, I'm disappointed that a teacher wasn't, you know, at the, at the meeting itself, at the interview itself. And I'm wondering if there is going to be an opportunity for, once this SRO begins, once Mr. Piazza begins, if he's gonna, you know, if we're gonna have, us teachers are going to have an opportunity to, you know, have something with him, you know, aside from students.
And he's actually being invited to the new teachers orientation.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, that's good.
So he'll be there.
That's nice. And will he be at the, maybe at the superintendent conference day as the beginning?
Oh, he'll be at all of it, yeah.
Okay.
He'll be starting as soon as, he'll be with us whenever school's in session.
Okay. All right.
So yes, there's, there will be ample opportunities for you to get to know him well.
Okay, thank you.
Diana, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
And again, directing it to my colleagues who are at the meeting. You know, one of the things I feel, and Margaret, I don't know if you feel the same way, one of the things I feel like I'm learning very quickly in this role is how much I don't know about what goes on behind the scenes at, in a school, and I think even, I don't know if I'll ever know. And it really became quite clear in watching Diana and Brian talk to, is he a detective, sheriff, Piazza? I don't know what you, Mr. Piazza?
Officer.
Officer Piazza. Thank you.
Oh, deputy.
Deputy. That, that they saw that there were multiple different ways in which his, his presence and his support would really benefit the school and really benefit the safety of children. And that, that meant a lot, you know, that meant a lot to me to know, you know, as being somebody who was, had some questions about it, knowing the strength of their thinking, that this is really important and appropriate and will allow them to do the work that they need to do while at the same time providing both an educational function, but when needed, a safety function as well. So again, you know, the more I learn, the more I realize I don't know. And, and, and it did really, being part of those conversations did really help me. I know that Evan, Jen, and Peter were, were part of the budget conversations that put this in place, and y'all this in place and y'all were all, you know, in support of it.
Fantastic. Any other questions regarding the SRO?
Can I just, one, just one issue? Because it's just to, because you mentioned you have a kindergarten, but you have a fourth grader. As far as board docs, and this is something I was going to bring up a little later, board docs, are you familiar with the board docs that we have? So, the, the board docs is, it's a public document. You can go on, you can get the agenda for the board meetings and then you all, they also post the videos of the meeting. So, if you wanted to, if you look at the agendas, so you don't have to sit there and watch a two-hour video and say, okay, well, maybe they'll talk about something I'm interested in, you can look at the agenda and if you see something that's interesting to you, you could fast forward right to that part. So, I would, I would urge you to do that, okay? So, Jen is a kindergarten mom, so I'm sure she'll be happy to walk you through that as well. But, but, and that's something, and that was something I was going to suggest, maybe on curriculum night, and Brent's here, curriculum night, that might be something like before they send the parents out, when they put in the auditorium, that maybe like a board member even could kind of just give a quick demonstration of board docs, show how like, this is the agenda, oh, I'm interested in this, and they can show how, they could just fast forward to that part and, and watch that.
And there's also backup materials. So, if there's something that you'd like to see, like the job descriptions of the pamphlet that came for the SRO.
Right.
Did that come, was that publicly available?
Well, that's what he's saying, it's on board docs.
Was it? Before the officer was interviewed? I mean, there wasn't a job application that went out, right?
No.
There weren't multiple applicants?
You just need to go to the mic. We can hear you.
I'm still just a little confused about how the officer was chosen. It doesn't seem like the rest of the jobs at Haldane where a job description goes out and everyone can see it and if it's a new job description, maybe parents have input and then many applications are received and the best candidate is chosen.
I don't, yeah, it's different than that because it's not through Haldane as much as it is through Putnam County. So, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Putnam County will, they have a whole curriculum of what does it mean to be an SPO or an SRO. They have a whole curriculum where they have people training to be in these positions and then once they have these groups of people that are all certified in these positions and then the schools contact Putnam County and say, hey, we want an SRO and they look into their pool of candidates that they know have been trained and either have experience or not experienced or a good experience that would fit with our school, they kind of select the candidate and then provide us with that candidate and then we have the opportunity to interview them if there's any sort of red flags that go up, if we don't think this person's a good fit, then we have the ability to say, uh-uh, not going to work, send us somebody else. Or we say, yeah, actually, great, great job at selecting this person, we would love to have that person with us. So, it's a different process, it's not like the same, we have a new job for a teacher process. Did I, yeah.
And how will his time be divided between the elementary, middle, and high schools?
He'll be roving and it's just going to be ongoing. And, you know, one of the things that you, it will be different every day and it will be something that no one will ever know exactly where they are for the obvious reasons because you don't want people to know, okay, this, from 10 to 11, they're in here, from 11 to 12, they're here. So, it's going to be a very fluid, modified, changing kind of situation on a day-to-day basis. And whatever happens that goes their way or whatever classroom they're invited into or whatever is the thing for them to do that day, they'll be there.
My, my memory is that he, also, one of the things I liked that he said was that in terms of what his daily activities would be, while they would be changing, that he was really interested in working with the staff and I would assume this would mean that the teachers as well, to really develop a set of programs that best met our needs so that, my take is that he's not just wandering around, that he's actually, he is wandering around to some extent, but that there are also activities in which he'll be engaged, right? So, like educational activities for the community, for kids of different grades and that he wanted to collaborate with, and I, I would assume it would be the admins and the teachers to really identify where he could make those contributions.
And he'll be eating lunch with different groups at different times and just getting to know kids and walking the halls and here's a copy of the, would you mind handing that to her? For sure.
Any other SRO questions or thoughts? I think we're, I think we're good. Continue on.
Okay. So, the last time we met, we talked about Plan A and we introduced Plan A, we talked about Plan A, we went out into the community as far as our, our potential reorganization of the administrators and how that would help to serve the district and help us launch our strategic plan. And the last time we were here, we decided that we were going to consider Plan B and so, one of the, a couple of things that are occurring. One is, we are presently in the screening process to hire a pupil personnel director, a Director of Pupil Personnel Services and Innovative Instructional Practices. So, that position, we've had a number of people that have applied, I think we have a good slot of candidates and you are coming to that. Okay, okay. I want to make sure that that's the case. And so, that will be a hire hopefully that we will make for the September 1st agenda. We have also, we were looking at the need to deal with some of the areas that we felt could use some tweaking within the, the way in which our K-8 school was organized simply because it was just too much to do, having nine grade levels that both the assistant principal and the principal had to work with on a simultaneous basis. So, tonight, we're recommending to the board that we put in a one-year kind of pilot-type position in which we create a position where we will have a middle school principal and we will add to that the CIO position that came, that was coupled with the PPS director or the, the Director of Special Ed or the Director of so many different things that we, we called Jen. And have a Jen, because of Jen's position and because of the degree, we're, we're moving that and we're going to be asking Julia to fill a one-year position as a pilot position, get an idea of how it works, get an idea if it's meeting the needs of the district and all the things that we're trying to do within this reorganization process and then if all goes well, put her into the tenure track sometime in the spring. So, the recommendation tonight will be to put Julia Sniffin into that position and to, to monitor it and see how it goes and I imagine with Julia Helm, it will go very well. And it's, there's a lot of, there are complicated factors. Brent will continue as our K-5 principal. He will have the responsibility of the elementary school and six of the grades. Julia will be six, seven, and eight and the CIO. And we're hoping that that will make some of the areas that we wanted to fine-tune work a little bit smoother.
So, just to clarify, the CIO means Chief Information Officer and that's the technology piece of which was Jen's position and that's being taken away from that position. One of the things we heard a lot during the reorganization discussion was that this role that Jen Wilson was encompassing was very, it covered a lot of bases. And one of the things we kept hearing was, we want somebody who can just focus on the students and on the personnel and wouldn't that be great? And so, that's one of the changes that Diana recommended was creating a Director of Pupil and Personnel Services and innovative.
Innovative instructional practice.
Practices.
Yep.
Still the same length of title, but I think it's all focused on the same thing now. And so, we're hiring a position for that. That, that's an external hire, right? And I think that that will meet the needs that we talked about, more focus in that But, that left the CIO piece and so, that is something that Diana's recommending that we move into the middle school principal's role specifically because Julia actually happens to have a lot of experience with that so that it would be a really easy fit for her. So, the Julia's role would be middle school principal, six, seven, eight, as well as the CIO. And Brent's role would be elementary school principal, K through five. And the assistant principal position wouldn't be inhabited this year. There would be no assistant principal because we, we won't, we wouldn't need one. Brent could really focus on the elementary, Julia could focus on the middle school and they could just kind of own those, those schools. It's also being proposed that because this is a pilot program, because this is not something we want to say, this is how it is, that's also something we heard a lot from our Plan A, was that people want a little time with things to make sure it works and transition. So, setting it up as a, kind of a pilot program means that Julia would take a leave of absence from her assistant principal role. So, if at the end of the day, we all said, you know what, this doesn't work, we liked it the way it was, we can go back to something similar. So, that's the thinking. Does the board maybe want to just kind of go through and share thoughts on the, on this proposal and Diana chime in if anything? Peter?
Yeah, just to start by backing up, the, the CIO role, the Chief Information Officer role is, it really doesn't align with what we've known, what we've called the technology piece of Jen Wilson's job. That has gone to Leah Horn, right?
Yes.
It's more the data gathering and data reporting and the other aspects of, maybe you can just clarify for us exactly what, what that entails.
Yeah. The CIO position really became bigger than life over the last many years because of all of the changes with the state education department and the reporting of student information and probably the most complicated piece is linking the teacher and the percent of time the teacher is working with an individual child. And they actually call them dosages, which is the, the amount of time a teacher is working with a specific kid. So, you can have one child with six teachers and they differentiate how much time is there by the dosages. So, if you think about 900 kids and you think about all the faculty and that not only includes like a fifth grade teacher, but is there a reading teacher involved? Is there an ESL teacher involved? Is there an art teacher, PE teacher? So, if you think about the number of faculty, you think about the number of students, that's something that we have to provide for the state so they can give the APPR scores. And so, that's just one example and you can imagine how complicated that is. Anything else that's related that, there's, there's information on a regular basis, there's things like VEDAR reporting and that's the, it's a report that talks about the amount of violent incidences that occur within a school district. As you can well imagine, our VEDAR reports are very low. There are school districts where they have extensive VEDAR reports. So, there are multiple types of things like VEDAR, like linkages, like test scores, like what people are teaching, that all goes into the CIO's position. And so, that's the type of information. Part of it is, most of it for the administrator is organizational, it can be done, there can be a clerical piece to it as well where there's input, but there has to be someone that's overseeing the big picture. So, I don't know if that answered what you wanted to get.
Oh, that certainly answers the question of what the role entails and it certainly makes a lot of sense, you know, when we think Brent's got six full grades that he's responsible for, Julia at the middle school has only three, but by adding, her taking on that CIO role, which is a pretty complex and, and time-consuming task, that kind of puts some, some balance to their, their workloads.
And if this plan works out, the assistant principal will just go away? Correct. That position will just go away. Yeah.
I think, I think it's a great idea. I think we, we solve a lot of problems with it. I remember when we, when we switched first from six to 12, we were one, you know, K to five and six to 12 and the logic there was a lot of changes going on and we need to adjust. Since then, that was, that was before Common Core, that was before APPR and it's just a necessity. And, you know, we are a small school district, Julia Sniffin is an asset to the district and I think it's just a natural transition that, that she goes into this role and I, I think it'll be great. It is a pilot program, so it gives us an opportunity to really see how it goes, but I, I, I think it really, really, in this two months, everything that we went through really was, was a perfect end to it with, with this recommendation. So, I think it's a great recommendation.
One of the things I, I like about this, well, several I guess, is it does build, getting to what both Evan and Peter said and everyone, I guess, is that it, it does address a lot of the concerns or the concerns that we heard over the past couple of months, so wanting to try something out and really see how it works instead of just moving into something. But it also importantly builds on a lot of the positive feedback that we got from the community about the, about appreciating the administrators that, that we have. The other thing that I don't think we've mentioned today, but I, I want to really bring up again is, you know, one of the major motivations, as I understood it Diana, for you to suggest the reorganization was thinking about how to best support, are putting into place the, the strategic goals and the strategic plan. And so, much of what that strategic plan focuses on is really upping our game when it comes to teaching and learning and at every grade, it's, what, what it takes to be a good teacher can really change, but there are some really important differences between K-5 and then once kids hit, start to hit puberty and all the, the physical and cognitive changes, you know? And so, it really allows, has the potential to allow those two administrators to continue to develop their expertise and their expertise in those particular age ranges while at the same time being part of the administrative team that, that is working to put the strategic plan in place. So, one of the things we, I heard a lot in the strategic planning process is wanting to, to really think about how to integrate, making sure that our children's educational experiences were integrated across, across the grades and so, we still have our same team that's been working together, but also really providing them with the opportunity to, to specialize a bit and, and given all the new requirements with the, the observations and, and how much work that is, allowing, again, this opportunity to continue to increase their expertise. So, anyway, I, I think it builds on a number of the things that, that we talked about in, in the conversations in, in July.
Yeah, and I think that something we heard also from community members was a, a wish for a little bit more clarity in terms of, who do I go to for this, who do I go to for that in terms of teachers? We've heard that from teachers, we've heard that from staff, we've heard that from parents. And so, being able to separate the roles a little bit more should give a little bit more clarity as well for all of us in terms of, and specialization, as Peggy was saying, in terms of who's kind of in charge and owning which group of kids and that, and validating that there is such a different thing going on K through five and six through eight and not just socially and emotionally and educationally, but there's also different staffs and there's also a different bell schedule and, and so, for an administration, an administrator, I imagine it would also be nice to be able to just focus on one and a little bit more, even more fulfilling. So, I think, I'm hearing that all of us are really excited about it. I don't know if you have anything more to share about it, Diana, or if we should open it up in case anyone has any questions in the public?
Unless there's specific questions.
Yeah. Is there any specific questions from the public about the suggestion or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Andrea, just pull up a chair maybe, right by there.
So, the, is it, is the pilot thing the same thing as interim? Is that, is, is that the same, it's the same?
Well, this is a one-year appoint.
Okay.
So, she's going to be appointed into the position for the year and take a leave of absence.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's similar, but this is where we're giving it a one-year try and then if it continues, so, so, yes, it's. So yes, but we're not hiring somebody into the interim. We're hoping that this remains the permanent.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, so that's what the difference is, okay.
And that's actually an important point, that our assumption is that, you know, if all goes well and we're all, everybody's happy about it, the administrators as well as the board, as well as the public, that we will then appoint Julia into this position. We won't be going through a hiring process or a search. You know, this is, this is her position to have if it all works out as we hope it will. So yeah, so that's an important thing to say.
This will give us an opportunity, we want to make sure we're not trading one set of problems for another.
Right.
And this will give us an opportunity to see, hopefully, that it will work out just as we anticipated.
Okay, all right. Is it too early to ask about money? Is she going to be, is that, has that been part of the discussion yet, or?
Yes.
Okay.
The compensation is going to be similar to the compensation we were proposing for the last position.
Okay.
So it's going to be the same ballpark, same number actually.
It's the same number?
Yep.
And so it's still the cost neutral that you've been talking about?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other thoughts or anything from the board on the topic or public?
Okay, and then the last part of my report, it's a very long report tonight. We
I've got several more items here listed. What do you mean the last part?
I have 11 things.
Oh yeah, I guess it is.
Yeah, no, you keep going, this is Diana Bowers Show.
I'm looking at the wrong page. The next part of my report is there, the potential of the creation of something we're kind of coining as a community leaders group. And throughout the last couple of months, we became aware that there are people that are really interested in kind of keeping their finger on the pulse of what's happening at that point in time for the school district. And we who live it day to day have a much better understanding of all the nuances than the people that are not part of it every day. So in my prior life, I've had real success with a group who were basically community leaders that had a real interest in knowing a lot about what's going on on an ongoing basis in the district. And we were talking about the potential of creating a group that would come together maybe bi-monthly. And I could give a report on what was happening at that specific time and share any information that I thought there may be an interest in. And kind of go a little bit deeper into some of the day-to-day information and plans and budgeting and all the things that happen throughout the year. And we would like to offer this to the community. And we would like to offer anybody that has an interest. If you do have an interest, just email me, dbowers@haldane school.org, or Lynda Dearborn. And let me know that you would like to be part of it. And provided that we have enough people that would like to be part of it and there's interest, this seems like a great idea. And if there are people that I think would be real pertinent for this community that could kind of share information and that's not speculation, but it's real information, I probably will tap a few people on the shoulder and invite them in. And I think it would be a good way of just having a conduit for flowing information. People who really would like to know, give them an opportunity to know if there are agenda items that, if there's things that people are hearing out there, you can let me know and I can include that on the agenda. And it would just keep the conversation going. So if you do have an interest, it is something that I definitely have an interest in offering to the community. And if you would like to be part of it, we'd love to have you. Okay, ELA and math assessments, the next. We did get the ELA and the math scores. They were released last week. And we did an analysis, actually Brent did an analysis, and it's on Board Docs if you'd like to go into it. This is a very complicated year to understand the ELA and the math scores. And it's very complicated because of the number of students that opted out. So there are groups, and in some cases like the eighth grade, but it's for a variety of reasons, including that the fact that they take the algebra test in eighth grade. Our report is showing 50 students in eighth grade opting out. And so what we did, so people can understand the report, and in some cases they're still very strong, and in some cases they don't look strong. Because if you have 50 students that have opting out of a class that's in the mid-60s, you're not going to have great test scores. So we put in the number of threes and fours, the number of ones and twos, and then the percentage of students that got the threes and fours, which are the benchmark. But also realizing that the threes and fours are with the new cut scores. So in order to hit a three or a four, you have to either get a 75 or an 80. That 65 passing no longer exists as far as the ELA and the math. We also put a third column there that shows the number of students that are reported as being opted out and are not considered. And they are considered non-test takers or non-completers. So this is statewide. I'm not sure what it means for school districts. I'm not sure what they're planning on doing because if school districts had the numbers and parents opted students out. So realize this is probably the most complicated year that we could provide scores for you because there are so many different factors that go into it. And now that we have a new Commissioner of Education, we'll have to see what she recommends as the next steps. But we wanted to tell you that they were there.
Now, the data you're referring to, I don't believe is available to the public through Board Docs.
It's not, it's just in executive content.
Okay, then we'll have it moved in tomorrow. Thank you.
I don't think anyone can decipher it anyway.
But I just wanted to ask a question, the eighth grade issue.
Yep.
I thought that the 50 opting out of eighth grade wasn't necessarily that they opted out. It's the issue that the, some of those kids are definite opt-outs. But there's also some number of that 50 children in the eighth grade who are listed as not tested, they didn't have to take
They took the algebra.
the eighth grade test because they took the regent's algebra test. And I think it would be really important to separate them out of this number.
And there are 37 students, 37, Brent?
37 students were algebra students that are, at first glance, appear to be quite those refusals. There were 13 actual refusals for eighth grade.
Yeah, that's 13 actual refusals.
That's pretty important to know that, Brent. Could you just say that to the mics so that folks on TV can hear that too? Because I think it's really important.
Because it's not 50, it's 13.
Yes, there were 13 actual refusals for math, eight. 37 of our 50 students took the, 37 of the 50 students who at first glance appear to be untested were algebra students.
Which then puts, with the exception, I guess, I mean, it looks like the fourth grade is a, no, the fifth grade's a bit of an outlier. But other than that, it looks like that's right along average across the other grades. The eighth grade wasn't. Yeah.
But that's
The number of refusals was slightly larger in the middle school than in the elementary, which was not uncommon when you look at other districts as well.
Okay. May I make one more comment about this? I think it would be, I think what you most want to do is get it published to the public part of Board Docs as soon as possible. But I would also ask, and I know that is extra work, but it would be very helpful to have alignment between how the 2013-14 scores are reported and how the 2014-15 scores are reported. Yes.
Those were notes that I just, I'm not sure if there's a reference to the notes that I passed home to Dr. Bowers, but that wasn't intended. That needs to be cleaned up before.
Okay, well, I know that Lynda also did that comparative analysis that came right from the state the other day, so.
Well, then I guess the most important thing is to make sure that whatever releases is what you wanted to release to the public. And maybe that is why it's on the executive content board. But I do think people are going to want to see that.
And the other piece too is that there's a point in time where they release it to the districts and then it's embargoed until a certain date, and then they release it to the public. So we, there will be times that we get the information for, at an extended period of time or a very specific number of days, and then they release it to the public. So the school can prepare whatever they need to prepare for when it is released. But it's somewhat confusing, and I just wanted people to realize that there are a lot of complicating factors with this one. And we still don't know what the ultimate outcome will be with the state. Okay, internal and state comptroller's audit. So just so you are aware, Ann has been exceedingly busy for the last few weeks. Not only is our internal auditor here that does our audits, financial audits and audits of just about everything every year, but we found out in July that we were about to have a comptroller's audit. And what, the last one was 2007?
Yes.
So they come in and there is a representative from the comptroller's office that stays with us for three full months. And they're there all day, every day, and we get to know them very well. And if you, if you want to stop in and say hi to Sam, he's in the district office. And they look at everything. And so this is something that all school districts will get on a periodic basis, and it's cyclical. And then this will be a report that they create and then they release to the community, so.
When can we expect the report?
They'll be done in, what, October with the audit itself?
Oh, at least, yeah.
And then does it take some time before they do the report? Or like, will we have it like before budget season per se?
Perhaps. He has a timeline and
Okay, so we'll see.
Yeah, I spoke to Sam's boss when they kicked us off. And she explained to me that the analysis phase would take, you know, about three months, but then it would take another potentially six months before the report would be ready. So it could be a little while. But I think at the end of the day, although it's a huge amount of additional work and it may think, oh God, I think it's a great thing for us. You know, they'll be turning over every stone, right? And if there's any way that we can improve the way that the district operates, we're going to find out about it. So it's ultimately going to be a good thing.
And I think tomorrow I hand over my computer. So they will go and, I mean, they may see a recipe or two, but that's about as good as it's going to get. So it's very thorough, extremely thorough. Solar project update, oh, no, in this one. Update on enrollment. We have the update on the numbers for K and 1. And actually, Carol, I think, I know that's in here somewhere, but do you know where we are with the kindergarten in the first? Okay. Okay, so that may be, that's over the tipping point, which we said was 66. So we have another couple of weeks before we close down the enrollment, before the opening of school. I mean, we never close down enrollment, but at least for the opening day, we'll know. And so we're going to have to take a look and see what that means. And Brent will have to consider all the factors and make a decision as to how we're going to ensure that everybody's well-educated, so that, more to come. Solar project update, if you've
Can I keep going, the first graders, do we know them?
Oh, the first graders, that's about, was that 65? I think that was 65. Okay, so we're all in the same ballpark there. The solar project update, if you've been watching, we have solar panels going on. They first started with the district office bus garage. That's actually online. We're making solar energy at this point. So those panels are working. The high school, there are panels on the high school roof. And right now they're placing the panels on the roof of this building. They are guaranteeing me that they will be out of here by the first day of school. They're pretty inobtrusive though, I have to say. They have been able to get up there and do, and it really hasn't caused a problem with anything on campus. And they've been very responsive, and I can say I'm very pleased as we talked about a number of things before it happened, to ensure that it would happen well. It's happening well. That's good. End of the year financial report. We are, at this point, we have, the summer months are the time that Ann and her staff kind of close out the books for the year. And at this point, there is a form, actually a large book that goes to the state that includes all components of the financials and all the components and where we end up. For those of you who may have followed the discussion, and I'll ask Ann to give some additional information if it's needed. We always try to end the year with at least a 4% fund balance. And the district is allowed to have, in an unrestricted fund balance, 4%. It used to be 2, it was upgraded to 4. And then anything beyond that, based on the expenditures for the year, we figure out if there are additional funds where they should go. This year, we have good news. And we actually have, at the close, including having a full 4% fund balance, we have about $725,000. And some of that came from increased state aid. A lot of it came from special education funding and kids that were either not in a place that we thought that they were going to be, or there were modifications. We also have, and I think that the same thing will happen next year as we have students that are in very expensive placements that may not be here. And so we'll wait and see what that happens. But I also have to say with special ed, it's just as easy to have the opposite happen. At the end of the year, if we have placements and students move out of the district, there's a savings. At other times, we have students move into the district and we have unanticipated costs. So it's, sometimes it's in the red, sometimes it's in the black. So the recommendation at this point is to use the funds for a number of things. One is to pay down the smoothing option. So we don't have to put funds into that for the next couple of years. And then we would be able to walk away from that. The other
Can you remind the public what the smoothing option is?
The smoothing option, if you remember, a couple of years ago, TRS, the Teachers Retirement, had a large increase. And it was, the increase between one year and another was substantial enough that it was causing real problems for districts to come up with the additional funding. And that created problems as far as potential staffing and a number of other things. So there was an option to kind of spread out the increase over years, which is basically the smoothing option. And then we have to pay it back. So now we're in a position that we have, we have almost, we have money that's kind of considered like mortgaged. And now we can pay it back, so we won't have to do it in the future. Anything else you want to add to that, Ann?
No, just that paying, opting out of the smoothing option and paying our obligation will take a substantial piece of that overage that we're talking about. And it's appropriate to put it towards that because really it was a lot of the special ed situation that we were in that particular year that we opted in that now is giving us this additional funding. So it's providing us this opportunity to pay it back and to save having to budget, you know, $100,000 a year for the next five years, plus interest in the budget.
So this is in excess of $400,000 that we would be paying back?
$483,000.
Yep, so close to $500,000. We also talked about if there were additional funds that we would like to start replenishing some of the reserves that we've been spending down over the last couple of years. And so the remaining funds, for the most part, will be used to replenish reserves. And when it's all said and done, and the board has agreed on what we are going to actually do with that money, we'll give specifics.
Yeah, just on the big swings year to year on the special education side. I mean, it was, it was that situation a couple of years ago that really crippled us budget-wise. So we're seeing that flip back now. And a big part of that is we're now being reimbursed for some of those large expenses that we incurred at the time, because the reimbursement happens in the following fiscal year. So we really get sort of caught in a, caught in a really tough spot at times. So is there any kind of a reserve fund that we could potentially set up to cushion us against some of that, to smooth out some of that huge fluctuation? against some of that, to smooth out some of that huge fluctuation in special ed expenses?
Unfortunately, that's not a reserve that's available to us.
Fortunately, it's way too practiced.
Exactly. There's, there are a lot of, a lot of reserves with very specific purposes, but not quite that specific.
So, any other thoughts or questions?
I love the idea of getting rid of that smoothing option. That was a really hard decision to make. I know we all said, you know, agreed to it regrettably, because we knew we were getting ourselves in a, a big thing to pay back bind. So, getting rid of that, I think, would be really nice.
Okay. And the next time you're in the district office, you'll see that we spruced up the place. And it's, it's something that's really long overdue. You know, we were trying to put the most professional face on the district office that we can. We have fresh paint, we have some wainscoting, we have things that have been moved around a little bit, and so, we'd love you to come see it. And I can tell you that the funds for the renovations were encumbered a number of years ago. So, this is something that the funds have been there, we're at the point that we're expending them. And, and actually, I think, you know, kudos to the guys in the district and our carpentry staff and our painting staff, because they've done an awesome job, and it's been done in-house, which makes a big difference as far as the cost. Okay. And I think this is the last one. Just a reminder that the next meeting, the business meeting of the Board of Education is September 1st at 7:00 in the Music Room. And the Board of Education will be actually taking a tour at 5:00, so we can show them all the things that have been done over the summer. This is something that we do on an annual basis, right at the beginning of the school year. We take them around and let them see, hopefully, that we're totally ready for the school year, and I anticipate that we will be. But there are a lot of very big items, like the solar panels, that are going to be part of the educational process and also the financial process for the district. And we've, the floor in the big gym has been redone, and the actual color is no longer green, it's blue. So, the Blue Devils really look like Blue Devils now. So, so please join us.
Moving on, in the correspondence, we have three letters. They're in Board Docs. I'll do a quick paraphrase. One letter was from Mr. Stephen Leifer regarding start time, earlier, or later start time for our school, encouraging the board to keep looking at it and to see what we can do about taking some action. And it is continuing to be on our list of things to talk about this year. It's going to be one of our workshop topics, so we'll talk about when that's going to happen down the line here. There's a letter from Mr. Michael Genjulis regarding our American flag and its poor state of affairs. And Mr. Genjulis took it upon himself to take care of that, which we are thankful for. And I'm not sure what happens next. I know that I did reach out to our head of facilities and Dr. Bowers and kind of alerted them to the situation.
So, Michael is in the process?
Michael's in the process. Are you our designated flag fixer? I would really love it if you are designated flag fixer.
The public facility on last night.
Okay, 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 okay. So, the American flags around campus are continuing to be looked at and made sure that they are up to code and standard. And we also have a letter from Ms. Kathleen Zebzda, I might be saying her last name wrong, regarding the Common Core and the Putnam County's legislators' opinion on, on the Common Core. So, is there any further communication from the public on any, any things? Yes.
Michael Genjulis, Putnam County News. I know you didn't vote on it yet, but since you already brought it up. Julia Sniffens, the principal position. So, are we saying it's $134,560, the $19,000 increase, what it was last time, just sorry, right? Okay. And then, the fund balance, was it an extra $483,000 on top of the 4%? The 483 is what you need to put in somewhere? I didn't catch that whole thing.
It was an extra $725,000.
Oh, it was extra $725,000, even better. Okay. And we'll see the numbers...
The 483 was for the pension smoothing.
Just for the pension smoothing.
That will come out of the $725,000.
And we're going to see that online eventually, the whole breakout?
Yeah. And what reserves they're going to be going into.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, any other questions, comments? Okay, consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
I'll motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? I feel like there's a few things in here we might just want to chat about, so Dr. Bowers, you can chime in here. We have the notification of retirement for Ms. Filmansky. No one get nervous, though, that is two years, two years away. She's just giving us an extra heads up. We have two years to give her retirement parties. A couple more retirements here. And just a note to Tom Cunningham, a big thank you to him for everything he's done for the district as our athletic director. He will be missed. We wish him well in his next position. And I know that, I don't, I think we're approving appointment, a little farther down is the appointment of our, our new athletic director. So, that is all moved along quickly. And maybe, Dr. Bowers, do you want to just talk a little bit about our incoming athletic director?
Yes, but I would like to also, before we do that, bid a fond farewell to Julie Hoffman, who's our librarian, extraordinary woman who is now moving, I guess, a little closer to home, and will be joining the Chappaqua School District. So, we'll be replacing her as well. So, she's a real loss, but we wish her, we wish her well. So, we are appointing tonight Christopher Salom as our new athletic director and dean of students. Christopher's coming to us from the Peekskill School District, and we had numerous candidate screen. Chris was one of three people recommended to the committee that interviewed the athletic director, dean of students. And one actually didn't come through, because right as he was about to come and he got a job, a new job. So, we had two finalists that came through. He was the unanimous pick. He's, he's high-energy, very motivated, philosophically very much aligned with the district, and I'll think he'll do a great job.
Also on this list is our official opportunity to officially approve Julia Sniffens' appointment to the middle school principal CIO, as well as approve a one-year leave of absence from her position as assistant principal. Any questions, discussion from the board on all of our personnel stuff?
The only question, well, I think we need to pull the extracurricular and co-curricular appointments from this consent agenda, since they just appeared on Board Docs within the last, probably since this meeting started. So, we haven't had a chance to review them yet.
Okay. We can do that.
Do we need to have them approved?
So, do we take them out there?
Yes.
Well, it'll be before the start of the school year.
Yeah.
So, our meeting's September 1st.
First.
So, that's fine. That's fine, right?
You know, we could, we could always adjourn for a few minutes and review them now, if we would...
We could do it on the 1st, though. It's before the school year.
Well, we can, we can appoint them on a date, on a, on September 1st of August. So, that shouldn't be problematic.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving into unfinished business, the approval of the Haldane Code of Conduct. We looked at this a little bit at our last meeting. We said we wanted a little more time with it. I think it is important to note that even when we, if we approve it tonight, it doesn't mean we can't relook at it throughout the year. It's just that we need to make sure it's in motion for this 2015-16 school year, so...
And we are required to share with the students and ask, and answer, answer and ask any questions that we think are pertinent, related to it by law. So, we have to do that. We have to have it available.
Right. So, it needs to be available, but it doesn't, you know, we can keep looking at it if, if needed throughout the year. So...
And I should also just, as a caveat to that, also say that we're probably going to be looking at the sports handbooks as well through the year, and so, that will be something we'll be talking about.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for our, a new athletic director to really look at those handbooks with fresh eyes and make some recommendations. Okay, so, Julia, do you need to read a recommendation?
I'd love to.
Okay.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the Haldane Code of Conduct for 2015-2016 as presented.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Any further communication from the public? Okay, moving into new business, we have the CSE/CPSE recommendations.
I'm sorry. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education is submitted.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Tax, tax time. Approval of resolution to confirm tax rules, authorize tax levy and approve the tax warrant for the 2015-16 school year. Julia, do you have a...
Yes, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the attached resolution to confirm the tax rules, authorize the tax levy and approves, approve the tax warrant for the 2015-2016 school year.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, in terms of discussion, it's on Board Docs. I don't know that everyone has this in front of them, so I will just share. The anticipated tax rate increase is 1.8249%, so it is below 2%. And do you have anything you want to share about our tax rate? Anything we should know about?
No, that, that figure is anticipated. It could be off, you know, by a decimal place, because if there's any corrections to the tax rule by the time they actually print the bills. So, if you're going to do any calculation, there could be a little bit of a variance. But at this time of year, we zero in on what the exact tax rate per thousand is. And, no, that's about it.
And Anne, this also takes into account the exemption, the veteran's exemption, right?
It does.
Yep.
Yes.
And just, you can just remind us the percentage increase in the tax levy was, as per the budget, 2.7?
It was 2.72% was the tax levy increase, to take it to the max. Because of, there was a tax levy reserve that I credited this year. And again, that goes back to something that came our way because of the tax smoothing option. That opting into the tax smoothing option really affected many areas of our budget and our revenues. Now that we're coming out of it, we're going to kind of get back to normalcy. But again, it worked in our favor that the tax rate increases below the 2%, even though we were able to go to the, the maximum.
Any further thoughts or questions about our tax rate?
I think it's really great news. Do I get to say that? You know, I mean, we went into the, you know, you all went into the budget sort of wanting to develop, I mean, develop a budget and, you know, we're able to do with everything that's going on, for the tax rate to be less than to present is fabulous. You know, it's just fabulous, you know?
Yeah.
So, I just, you know, I think it's great. I just wanted to make that, everyone's being so businesslike. I want to be like, I think this is really good news, you know, so...
Do you dance with that?
I do. I think, I think it's, I, you know, I think it's, it's good.
I think it's global.
It's not always going to be good like this, but I think it shows, you know, I think what the, what the board accomplished with the budget and keeping the tax rate increase at this is fabulous.
Yep. Okay, good news. I think we need to do a roll call vote for this.
Yeah, I'm deciding. It's a signature.
Do you want, can I do that after the meeting, or we do?
After, after, just don't run out.
Okay. Okay, so, Julia, do you want to call, roll call vote for this?
Um, okay, sure. Um, let's see. President Daley?
Uh, yes, aye.
Vice President Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Clements?
Yes.
Trustee Parr?
Yes.
Trustee Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the district committees, this is something we talked about at our retreat, made some, well, there's two things we need to do, right? We need to reauthorize them and we need to designate the board members. Okay, so first, we're reauthor, approval of the district committees and charges for 2015-16. So, the committees are the Buildings and Grounds, the Code of Conduct, Health and Safety, Technology, Wellness, and the Audit Committee, but we've already approved the Audit Committee at our last, or maybe we did it at the reorg. Anyways, we've already done that.
Can I ask you a question? Were we going to add social media to this? Didn't we have some discussion that there was going to be, that we were going to add social media to one of these things?
Social media committee?
Yeah. No? I thought we, I thought I had notes and we wrote it down. No, we were talking, that, when we were talking about our, when... Like, which groups we were each going to be with. I don't remember that. I know that there was a, as part of our goals for the past year, there was the telling the Haldane story, but I don't remember it being part of this conversation.
No, these are, yeah. What social media, if any, that we would like to include in, to get our story out. And if, if we actually go through the branding process, and that's something we're going to be talking about this year. But not here. Right.
It's more of like an unofficial committee, I think we were talking about. These are Board of Education committees, and then there's kind of...
So, we weren't going to add that here?
No.
Okay.
But we will have a conversation about it.
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be part of the discussion in September, when we have Simon and Leah coming and the teachers that have gone to the New Tech Network training and the PBL New York, and we'll all come in and start talking about what that means in relationship to the strategic plan and to the instruction in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion. I'll second.
Any discussion about our district committees and charges? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The designation of board members to the district committees. So, we went through this, I think, as a group. I don't know that I need to go through it now. But it's all on Board Docs. I feel like we, unless anyone has any changes to be made. But some of those unofficial committees that I was just saying are on here, that, not really that it's a committee, but in terms of more of a liaison, a board representative is a liaison to all of these, you know, the PTA, the School Foundation. Those aren't necessarily board committees, but they're groups that are important to the school. And the list of people here, they serve, each board member serves as a liaison to that committee. So, if it's possible, we go to the meetings. We're also just somebody to interact with that group with questions. The PTA, for example, Peter Henderson is that liaison this year, so... So, you know, he'll connect, connect with the president of the PTA and just say, hey, here I am. If you have any questions about the board or board staff, let me know. He'll go to board meet, you know, PTA meetings if and when he's available. And so, that's kind of how it works.
We should just let people know who's being assigned to each committee, I think.
And I'll run through the list. I'll run through this, okay.
But I also think we should separate it from what are the board committees and what are the other committees in doing this.
So, as we go.
This is where I thought it was being at.
Okay, so the Audit Committee, which is a board committee, that's Evan Schwartz and Peggy Clements. The Booster Clubs, which are not board committees, they're not even really committees, they're just clubs for our school. The Fine Arts Booster Club is Peggy Clements. And the Blue Devil Booster Club will be Evan Schwartz. Buildings and Grounds, which is a school board committee, will be Peter Henderson. The Code of Conduct, which is a school board committee, will be Margaret Parr. The Communities That Care Coalition, which is not a board committee, it's just a group that we're connected to, will be Margaret Parr. The School Foundation, which is not a school committee, it's just a committee that does a whole bunch of great stuff for our school, it will be Margaret Parr. The Labor Management Committee, which basically liaisons with the HFA, will be myself and Evan Schwartz. The Negotiations Committee, which basically does that, that helps with the negotiations for union contracts, will be myself and Peter Henderson. The PTA will be Peter Henderson. The Safety Committee, which is a board committee, will be myself. The Technology Committee will be Peggy Clements. And the Wellness Committee will be myself. Anything else to add about all those committees?
No, that's good.
They're good stuff. Approval of contract for the educational services with Carrefin School. Can you to read something?
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the contract for educational services for 2015-16 as per student IEPs with the Carrefin School at 40 Radio Circle Mount Kisco, New York, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign the contract on behalf of the district.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, approval to change the date of the February 2016 Board Workshop Meeting. I believe this is because it falls within the midwinter recess.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve that change?
A second.
Yeah, do, but, yeah, thank you, Julia.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education changes the date of the February 16, 2016 Workshop Meeting to February 23, 2016 due to the fact that February 16 falls within the midwinter recess.
Okay. Evan? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Policy review, first reading amendment to the, oh, this is our notification of, oh, wait, no, there's two. Transportation of Students and the Notification of Sex Offenders. So, this is just a policy review. This is the first time we're, well, we discussed it a little bit, but it's the first time we're kind of looking at it and discussing it before we make any official changes.
And a couple of notes about, actually, one about both of them. We have had a number of parents that are requesting changes in transportation at this time of the year or businesses that are asking for changes in transportation. We want to go on record that the New York State Education Law requires that if you want a altered transportation for your child for daycare purposes, you have to let the district know by April 1st of the preceding year. And there are some, some reasons why you can request it at a later date, like if you move into the district after April 1st or, or if there is a, a major change in your family situation and a health issue, something along those lines. But we just want the public to know that that does exist. And if you know that your child's going to be somewhere different for transportation or need transportation to another area, there is an April 1st deadline. And it makes sense because we have to do it before the budget is voted on and we have a lot of different things that change over the summer and it, it would just be too overwhelming to school districts to have it just changed right through the summer as well. So, we're going to make that, that point a number of times through the year. So, people do recommend changes before the, the April 1st deadline so it doesn't become problematic. And so, we're also talking about putting some information in the policy that would specify why the board may hear a request at a later date and for extenuating circumstances. So, that's, this is the beginning of that conversation. And it is, again, it's all dictated by law and what the requirements are, and so, we should go from there.
Yeah, so similar, a little bit to our residency conversation that we had earlier in the year where we said, you know, sometimes there's extenuating circumstances. We want somebody to be able to apply to us to say, this is going on, I'm technically out of district, but can my kids still come here? You know, whatever. Like an application process for extenuating circumstances. So, I, I guess we're talking about doing a similar thing here for transportation so that there is some sort of protocol. It's not just somebody calling Diana's office and begging and pleading for a change, but that there is a, a process to go through.
And while, while we understand how difficult it is to kind of manage all of that type of situation, we're all parents, we've all been there, we've all done that, and we, we understand, we empathize with that, but we're trying to put it in a way that it will work best for the whole district.
So, I don't know if there's anything we need to do about that right now. I didn't see any, we're just kind of bringing it up to just start thinking about?
And I think that that's something we'll be prob, be adding some language to that that's similar to language we've offered in other policies. The other thing is we had a conversation about the information that the district receives or seeks out regarding registered sex offenders in the Haldane community. And there is a website that parents can go to that you can find out whether or not there are sex offenders in your district. And we were talking about districts have the opportunity to do a couple of things when they are notified of sex offenders. One is they can notify the sex offenders that if they're Level 1, 2, or 3, they have to obtain permission from the superintendent if there's any reason for them to come on school campus. The one part, one caveat to that is during Election Day for the, if, if there is election here, they can come onto school property, but they can't come into any school buildings. So, that will be, that will occur. We also, when we send out newsletters, we will give the website so if parents have an interest in finding out whether there are sex offenders in the area, they can go onto the website and find out.
I feel like we all have had some time with this one. Is this something that we want to move forward with and approve?
I don't think you have to necessarily approve it. It's just more of a discussion.
Okay.
And then when it's change, if there's change in the policy, at that point, you'll approve it.
Okay. Well, so there's, the changes that you're suggesting are reaching out to the sex offenders and saying, you can't come on school property.
Right, that's something that we agreed to.
Right, and then the other change, potential change would be to say, we need to make it very available to parents about where they can find the information. It's not, we're not putting the website on our homepage as like the, the first thing you see, but we're going to say to parents, if you want to find this stuff out, here's how you can find it out.
And there is one additional sentence that we included in the policy that's here for the first read that talks about the fact that by law, they're allowed to be here on Election Day.
Right, and that's actually, that was news to me. I didn't ever make that connection between, that's one of the many reasons that if we're having elections at the school, that, that's one of the reasons we don't have school in session or if it's at a separate building, that, because everyone can come vote, right? So, there were people on school property that aren't normally allowed or invited onto school property, so we don't want to have the kids around. But, so that's, that was news to me and I think that's, I never made that connection. Uh, okay.
But it's, just to point out, it's one of the exceptions that, that, I mean, just to point out to, to the public that, like the, like the other exceptions, it's with the written authorization of a parole officer and the superintendent knows, right? Because we're talking about this add D to the policy, right? I just wanted to clarify for the public, if people are looking at this, that, that it's not, that if there's election, they can just come on campus, that there is a very, a very, a very strict protocol that would have to be followed for that to happen.
And there's a very finite area of the district they can access.
It's a very, very carefully controlled.
Correct.
Possibility for them to access the school. Just wanted to point that out.
And anybody that doesn't belong in the building will not be allowed access to the building. They just come in and vote and leave.
Okay. So, next on our agenda here is the discussion about board goals for 2015-16 and then the discussion of the Board Workshop topics for 2015-16. So, we don't have to decide these tonight, but maybe if we can just kind of start the conversation. I just want to pull up the current board goals. So, one of the things we've been talking a little bit about is that, you know, we don't have to start from scratch every time we do board goals. There are some things that are currently on our list of goals that we haven't, that we need to keep, keep up there, that we want to keep working on. The first goal from last year was to support the transition of the new superintendent. Obviously, we don't need to keep doing that. I think we've transitioned her. But one of the things that that, you know, we, we do, we are suggesting a new administrative organization this year and we have new administrators, you know, a new athletic director. We have, we'll be having a new Director of People Personnel Services. We have a new elementary, middle school principalships going on. So, it seems to me that keeping something about supporting our new administrative reorganization would be an interesting thing to keep. Keep in the mix. Yeah. And then, you know, number two was to adopt a new district-wide strategic plan, which we adopted. But, and you know, now the task is how do we actually implement it?
Right.
Right? And so, I think somehow discussing how, how do we do that? How do we support the implementation of the strategic plan might be an interesting way to kind of address that goal. And then the telling the Haldane story, that's something that, I don't know about that goal. I feel like maybe that's something we can relook at or maybe it's something that's part of number two of implementing the strategic plan. I don't know that that's something we need to just pull over to next year. But the support, number four, the support of continuous growth and improvement of teachers, staff, students, parents, and administrators, that to me sounds like that's a good goal to keep going on, kind of as is all the time. So, that's kind of a little bit of an overview. I don't know if anyone has anything that's want, they want to just kind of shoot out at this moment of things that they want to include or keeper, striker.
I feel like there maybe, well, I think you hit on the nail on the head with the three things, but maybe if we can, in September, come up with like a, an hour as a retreat item, like a retreat where we can dive into the, I don't know if we can do the narrative right now in front of everyone, but really dive into the narrative.
So, September 1st?
Well, it sounds, looks like we got a busy agenda on September 1st with the tour and the exec session.
So, the next.
Yeah, maybe like the, the workshop meeting, do like a, a 6 o'clock, five, or a, a six, or maybe do a 6 o'clock retreat and maybe start at 7:30 instead of 7.
Yeah, but I think what we discovered with our last, with our retreat was that goals, Board of Education goals is not supposed to be done in a retreat, it's supposed to be done in a public session.
Well, we.
We could call an earlier meeting.
Well, we're not making, well, we're discussing the goals and then we would ultimately roll them out in a public meeting.
I think the discussion, it was recommended that we discuss, but we could just start the meeting at 5:30 and from 5:30 to 7 is a discussion on goals and then 7 o'clock.
Oh, that's a good idea.
We can go into regular session.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Or 6, 6 would be better.
So, just, just some time to focus on it is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So, yeah, in this way, we don't have to, you know, we can actually, you know, get into the narrative of it and, you know.
Because one of the questions I have is what, so if number two, which was adopt a new strategic wide, adopt a new district-wide strategic plan now becomes support, the implementation of it, how is that? And is that different from support the continuous growth and improvement for teachers, staff, students, parents, and administrators? Because my feeling is that much of what is articulated in the strategic plan is about focusing on, I mean, there was a lot of conversation in that, in those meetings about thinking of the strategic plan as continuous improvement. So.
Yeah, I agree. I think there's some overlap. I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I, just to make sure that we, I guess another question that I would have for this longer conversation, and this could speak to my lack of tenure as a trustee member, is if the, how do we even, how do we even support it? Right, because one of the things I think, and then maybe this is for Diana to explain to us at some point about sort of her vision of how you roll out the strategic plan, because what we acknowledged was it's this big plan, it's ambitious, there's multiple pieces of it, and the best way to roll it out will be for Diana and the administrators to, to tackle specific pieces of it each, each year. And so, for us to even support them in doing that, we would need to know what, what they're planning to do. And so, maybe you can have a goal that you just say support and you don't know what the plan is.
Well, let me share a little bit about what we're planning on doing at the opening of school. And actually, today and tomorrow, we are having our administrators retreat. And at the second part of the day tomorrow, we are going to be talking about what the superintendent's conference days will be on August 31st and 1st. And those are the days that we're going to be asking the faculty to work with us and to come up with the first step in what, in our action plan. And so, the conversation in, with the first couple of days will be the beginning and the determination of what our action plan will be for this year. So, I can report back more once we've heard all the constituent groups that will be here for the opening two days included in that conversation. You'll have the administrators, you'll have the CSEA, you'll have the teachers, and all of, and all of those groups will come together to begin to formulate what, what is our first step into it this year.
So, we won't be able to discuss that on September 1st?
Well, we, it will be, we'll be finishing, it's August 31st and September 1st. So, I can give you fresh off the press kind of information with what.
That's a lot of pressure for you.
And, and, but then there also has to be conversations and the board should be chiming in. And then if we have this new community leaders group, we can certainly hear their thoughts in it as well. So, I'm not going to give you a, a full dissertation on it that day, but I will, I can tell you what, I mean, I'm sure I'm going to walk in here very excited. And, you know, there's a lot of, there will be a lot of smart thinking that happens on those two days and it will help us begin to solidify our first steps.
Okay.
So, it sounds like maybe we should move our board goals conversation to September 16th. Lovely song. Are we comfortable with that? Should we move it to the 16th?
I think so.
Yeah, give us some, some focus time and plus our meeting tonight has been super long anyway.
It'll be as an open session, but we'll start it a little bit early.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Tuesday, the 16th?
Tuesday is the 15th.
15th?
Tuesday is the 15th and there's no school that day. We still have a meet, we have.
Oh, wait, oh, it's right. There's no.
Is it Monday and Tuesday?
Monday.
Just Monday. I think we have a session on Tuesday.
I should be all right. I should be all right.
Okay, so we'll have our board goals discussion at that point on the 15th. And maybe, can we wrap in our workshop topics at that time too? Is everyone okay with that or do we need to get it done tonight?
No, I think we already have decided for the first, for September at least, we would like to bring the teachers that have gone to different places. we would like to bring the teachers that have gone to different places over the summer and the institutes and come back and report out what they've learned and, and begin that conversation.
One topic that I, I've always asked, I've asked for it the last couple of years. I don't think you, it wasn't, is a, definitely for Peggy and Margaret, an APPR workshop? Like what, the breakdown of, of what the sixty, like what is the APPR?
Well, we don't know yet.
I know, I know we don't have the new one. Like, but we'll never know, like if you keep.
Great workshop.
It's like, what's the current one? Like, I, may, maybe, I don't, I don't, you know, like, I mean, there is one for the end of the year now. There is, what, what?
It's going to change as soon as we negotiate it. So they, we're supposed to have it to, on, at the State Education Department finalized on November the 15th. That will not happen. So we're going to have to ask for an extension, but if you want to do it in the spring.
Yeah, like March or April, maybe.
We can give you the new one.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, as I said, and I think it'd be very valuable. I mean, I, I mean, I could open up and read and understand what it, what it is, but I think it'd be very valuable for, for.
I agree.
For, especially the new board members.
Yeah, and, and we have, we're at the point too where we're just trying to sort through all the new regulations because it's very confusing and everything has changed. And we're trying to put it into some kind of usable format so we can all agree on what the next steps will be. So yes, in the spring, that would be a great time.
Great.
Okay, so we're going to table those two topics to this meeting on the 16th. I feel like our football players never arrived. Did I miss them?
They did not arrive.
You're feeling right.
But I can tell you what we were going to say to them when they came. We, we have the Hudson Valley Honor Flight that is honoring Coach Ryan McConville and five of our players. And I'm going to, I know I'm going to pronounce the last student's name incorrectly, so I apologize. So if anybody can help me out with it. But we have Colleen Bolt, Michael Champlin, Liam Irwin, Luke Ginjulis, and Thomas.
Percocillo.
Thank you, Thomas Percocillo. And so they have been honored and we would like to congratulate them for being the upstanding students that they are and representing Haldane.
Okay, is there any further communication from the public? All right, so I will make a motion for us to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're not coming back, so you guys will be.